To the March 25th, Walton City Council work session. I'll go ahead and start off the work session. And our first item tonight is a presentation from John Horvick from DHM on the regional tolling survey results. John, welcome. Come on up.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm John Horvick, Senior Vice President at DHM Research. We're a nonpartisan public opinion and policy firm here in the metro area. Different ways to describe what we do. One is to say we're pollsters, and that's fine. I don't mind that term. But I also like to say we ask people what sort of communities they want to live in. And we do that through different research techniques, including doing some survey research. And here I'm going to present some research that we recently conducted with a collaboration of entities, including the City of Tuolton, on how voters in the Portland metro region view tolling. Now, the governor's made a decision to put this on the back burner. So some of the work that we did was prior to the governor making the decision. Maybe a little bit less relevant now, but I still think that there's important things we can take away about how people are thinking about the transportation in the region, what they value in terms of making decisions about any particular funding that would go through. A lot of it was about tolling, but the underlying values, I think, are still helpful to understand. And we did ask some questions at the end of the survey about alternative funding mechanisms, which will -- well, we'll get to that. We'll get to that. So I'm going to work through here. If I look to the side, of course, I am looking at the presentation on the screen. So the survey was prepared for the cities of Westland, Tuolton, Wilsonville. This is my mistake. I left off Oregon City. Oregon City was also a partner, and I do apologize for that. United Commercial Workers 555 and the Stafford Hamlet. We wanted to gauge opinion on congestion and road quality in the Portland metro region. So how are people feeling about that? Assess their awareness of tolling. Again, we did this before the decision was made, but we wanted to know, gosh, were people paying attention to this policy conversation or not? And then asked specifically about some of the plans that were being put forward by ODOT. And then, again, we'll get to it, some alternatives as well. The methodology, and I can certainly pause and answer questions about this if people are curious, but this was a survey of people, voters, registered voters, in the Portland metro region. So that includes the three counties. And sample size of total of 600 voters is proportional to the region. So, you know, there are more people in our sample from Multloma County than Clarkamas County because there are more people in Multloma County than are in Clarkamas County. It's what we call a hybrid or mixed mode approach, meaning we reach out to people through a couple of different means in order to ensure that people participate. And so some people still want to get reached by traditional phone call. So there are some folks out there that would prefer to talk to somebody, and if we don't offer that as an option, we will miss important groups. And the other folks, darn it, they don't want to answer the phone. They're not going to answer the phone at all if they see a number come in that they don't recognize. And so we also text people a link, which they can click on and take the survey on their smartphone. So they can also share that link to another device, their tablet or their computer if they prefer, but most people do it on their smartphones. So we use different approaches. Survey was conducted in the first part of February. It's 14 minutes to complete. In any survey, there are what we call in the business differential response rates, meaning that some people are just more apt to take a survey than others. So people with more education tend to participate more readily than those with less. Women more than men. People who are older more than people who are younger. People with more education more than people with less education. We know that when we were fielding a survey, so we set quotas to -- so once we fill the bucket of these different demographic groups who are easier to reach, then we put their efforts in making sure we're reaching people in different demographic groups. So we set those quotas by age, gender, race, education, income, county, political party affiliation in this survey to get that representative sample. Margin of error is 4%. Sometimes things might add up to 100 due to rounding. At the bottom of here, it sort of walks you through the order of the survey. You're going to see that with the presentation, so I'll skip over that for now. So then just who we heard from. I won't go through all these numbers, but it's really just to demonstrate to you that we have a good representative sample from across the region. So by age, you can see the profile, gender, party. The numbers could get goofy here on the screen rather than the original deck, but you can see race there as well. Nearly a third of the respondents are folks of color, good mix of income, education, and employment status. We did ask, of course, in the survey, do you own or lease a vehicle? Of course, most people do, but just to validate that 86% of folks in our survey own or lease a vehicle. In the presentation here, there's going to be times when I'm going to call out some results based upon geography that's different than county. So sometimes you're going to see the I-5 alone, I-205 alone, and rest of area, or I-5 alone, I-205 alone, and then sort of combined I-5, 205. What we've done is simply, you can see the map here, the I-5 and I-205 is we identify people who live in zip codes where the interstates travel through, and we descriptive them some categories. It's a proxy for if you live close to the roads or not, right? Some of the zip codes are also close to the highways, but not included, but this is just gives us an estimate for those who are closer than those who are farther away, if their attitudes are different. And then just do folks drive on these roads, or how many people do in our sample. So 22% said that they drive on I-5 and I-205 daily. Another 36% do it a few times a week. So if you just think of those who are doing it on a weekly basis, you're about 6 out of 10 folks. So people have experience with these roads. People are going to have opinions about these roads. The tolling policies would affect folks, and we really see that here. Why are people taking I-5 and I-205? 28% are saying mostly for work. 57% said mostly for other reasons. So a lot of people are taking the roads, of course, for work, but that's not actually the majority of reasons. They're out and about for, you know, take the kids to school or soccer practice or grocery shopping, whatever else you got to do in your life. People are using the roads for lots of reasons. And then about 16% say it's the same for both. There are, as you would expect, differences by area and sort of the purpose you're using the road. So these are the percentages of people who are taking I-5 and 205 at least a few times a week, okay? Clarkamas County, 74%. So three out of four voters in Clarkamas County are taking it a few times a week. It's less than Washington County. Well, it makes sense. These roads are further away from Washington County, but still nearly half of Washington County voters are taking it a few times a week or more. So there are differences by region, but no place in the region are people not using these roads. And of course, those who are taking roads mostly for work, they're the ones who are using it more often. So even though we saw that 57% are using it for some other reason, those most frequent users are work commuters. All right. So now that's just sort of described who we talked to, what they're doing, their knowledge, awareness, and use of the roads. Now we're going to get into some attitudes. We just had a couple of questions. One is if people were concerned or not. This one here shows about the quality of major roads and highways in the Portland metro region. This was actually at the top of the survey before we got into tolling. So this wasn't asked specifically about I-5 and I-205. But we can see that 74% say that they are concerned about the quality of the roads, including 33% who are very concerned. As we think about this with tolling or other funding mechanisms, this means, at least on quality, people are acknowledging that there is a challenge to be met, right? There's a need that they see that could be addressed. We asked similarly with congestion. 81% said, yeah, they're concerned about traffic congestion on these roads. So 40% are very concerned. So again, you know, tolling might not be the preferred means to get their quality concerns or congestion concerns met, but they are saying that these are problems, that they want to have some sort of improvement done. So then we get into general tolling attitudes. So we asked first about tolling in a general sense. We said, you know, there is a gas tax is less able to meet the transportation funding needs in the region, is cars become more fuel efficient, there's more electrical vehicles on the roads. A means to address funding for transportation is tolling, and it can also deal with congestion. What do you think about tolling in the Portland metro region? So this is not about RMPP. It's not about the I-5 Abernathy Bridge. This is just a general sort of statement. And we can see that 76% are opposed to tolling in the Portland metro region, including 63% who are strongly opposed to it, okay? We did not -- well, we are going to ask why. I'll get to that in a second. And you can see again that there are some differences by some demographics. One is by geography. So the important thing when you look at these differences, first of all, is that everyone is opposed to tolling, okay? There are differences, but they're differences in degree rather than kind. So if you look at like geography, yes, 91% of voters in Clarkamas County oppose tolling, which is more than 69% who oppose in Multloma County, but that still means seven out of 10 in Multloma County oppose tolling, okay? And you can see by income. Income, note that is more opposed by people of lower income, and that's going to be one of the main reasons that people oppose tolling because of concerns about the impact that it have on low-income drivers. Then you can see party there. So it's not a surprise that Republicans oppose tolling, but also 69% of Democrats oppose So here we see this proximity to roads. Those who live close to I-205, 86% oppose. And those who are on the roads more frequently, 80% of those who are on the roads more frequently oppose. But again, 70% of those who are not taking the roads as frequently still oppose. So there are differences, but they're more in degree than in kind. So after we asked this general tolling question, if you supported tolling, we asked to follow up why, in your own words. What is the benefit or value or good that's going to come out of tolling? And then we tried to listen and read all the comments and put them into some meaningful categories, and there's three things that really stand out. Now, keep in mind, this is of those who support tolling, and most people do not support tolling. So it's of the 600 people that we surveyed. This is only 117 of them. But the top three here are raising revenue, is going to bring in some bucks to pay for that, those quality congestion needs maybe. 29% say the road's just a need maintained. Or notice that expansion is in there too. So we did, we did put expansion capacity in that bucket. And so far as I understand, RMPP and the I-5 205 project, or the I-5 Abernathy Bridge project, capacity really wasn't sort of the issue, right? So some of these people are saying I support tolling because I can get more capacity, and that's, that's not what was being proposed. And then reduce demand, traffic congestion management. Those were the three reasons. Why do people oppose? 41% of plurality say the taxes are just too high, or they shouldn't have to pay more. And you really, when you look at the individual comments, people are really saying to us, you know, I'm paying a lot right now, whether it's in gas taxes or local property taxes or state income taxes. I'm paying a lot. I'm contributing a lot. And either I think that what I'm contributing should be sufficient, or I'm just tapped out. I just can't afford more. Next is it's unfair to low-income drivers, it's expensive, and that's going to come up in some of the other questions we asked about later. Then the third is just there's going to be mismanagement of funds, oversight or spending. These are folks who just have a lack of trust in our ability to deliver this effectively and efficiently. Some of those are going to be specific to tolling, but some of them are just going to be general distrust of government. You're going to have some of that in those comments. So then we described, or we'll get to that in a second. First, we just said ODOT's considering tolling these major roads in the region. Have you heard anything about this? So majority had. 61% had. We did not ask, you know, how much you've heard. You know, we didn't put it on a scale, just have you heard anything? So I couldn't, I couldn't tell for you for how informed they are. But 39% had not. I'm not sure if I kept it in here, but it is higher in Clarkamas County than it is in other parts of the region. So then we gave people descriptions of RMPP and I-5, I-205 Abernathy Bridge project. And by the way, people got them, some people, half the respondents got RMPP first, half the respondents got I-5 Abernathy Bridge first. And we did our best to describe this in a neutral way, consistent with the way that ODOT's describing it in its own materials, okay? Language matters, but we did our best to be, to be fairly describe what the project is. So the Regional Mobility Pricing Project, 71% opposed, 58% strongly. So remember again, about 76% or about that oppose tolling generally, and it's 71% here. So it's a little bit lower here, and you're going to see why in a second. But then the I-5 2, I-205 Abernathy Bridge project, 64% opposed, 51% strong. Now, if these are sorts of, if, as a pollster who does lots of this work, you think of like things that are going to be on the ballot, I mean, these are things that you just know are not going to pass up the ballot. It's underwater now, but really look at that strong opposition. That's the number that really tells you that these are the folks that are going to be organized. People are going to contact you all. And those are, those are the groups of people that defeat measures. Oh, this wasn't something that was going to be on the ballot. And then we asked, ODOT has at least talked about broader tolling in the region, including Highway 26 and 217, and here we see that opposition go up to 77%. And the, I guess I didn't take it and put it in here, but part of the reason why is that the I-5, excuse me, I-205 Abernathy Bridge project, you saw opposition a little bit lower there in Multloma County and in Washington County. Folks further away saying, you know, if they want to do it, that's up to them, or if they're not going to do it, that's, that could be my problem. But then when we said, hey, it could be 217 and 26, right? Then that opposition goes up again. So proximity does matter, like whether you think you're going to be impacted or not matters, and that's where we, that's where we see that. So then we gave people reasons that might, folks might support tolling, or might support these particular projects. And we also give people reasons that might oppose. Again, people, half the folks heard reasons to, or information in support of tolling first, and half the folks got information about why people might oppose tolling first. And then these individual things were randomized, so people got any one of these first. Now, these are sort of reasons that, that people might support tolling. And the greenish color means that people thought that they were very good or good reasons to support tolling, okay? The gray are, it's either poor or very poor reasons to support tolling. And we can talk about entities individually, but the important thing is here is that those greens, those lines are, those bars are short, right? Less than half the people given a reason to support tolling said that that is still a good reason to do it. At the top was sort of this equity or fairness statement that if you use the roads, you should pay for them, and that users are paying with tolls, and that might be a good reason to support tolling. That's the one that was at the top, but only 37% of folks thought that that was actually a good reason to support tolling. Next is ensures adequate funding to maintain roads, encourages alternative modes of transportation, and the lowest there discourages people from driving during the busiest times. There are many, many things we could put in there, but again, we really leaned on the information that ODOT has been talking about in their communications to the public about these because we wanted to be consistent with that and be consistent with what is the, the conversation in the community. Now, messages opposed to tolling. You can see now the lines are, the bars are much longer, bigger. And again, I'd say the most important thing here is, is it's less about the individual message, but that there's just lots of reasons that people can come up with or agree to that the tolling isn't something that they're favorably inclined towards. The number one, though, was unfair to shift, unfair to those who cannot shift their travel times. These are actually shortened versions of the longer message, just wouldn't fit on the slide here. But basically, it's saying if you have a job, you can't move your time. It's unfair to those particular individuals. Number two, I mean, it's, it's not much below, is tolls increase neighborhood traffic and congestion. So there is that concern about traffic being pushed off the highways into neighborhoods and to, to cities like Tuolton and causing congestion. And then next, cost maintains, maintained roads should be shared by the state. A message that included information that ODOT's estimates are that if the tolls are fully implemented and sort of effective to the, to the extent that they could be, it would save three to 10 minutes to get across the, the region. People didn't think that was enough. And that it's costly to set up and operate tolls. So those are all reasons people thought were, were good reasons to oppose tolling. But again, it's, it's less about the individual ones than it is, this is a collective set of reasons that people disagree with. Now, this is how these statements did in opposition to tolling, based upon whether or not you supported or opposed the RMPP, okay? So the green dots are among supporters of RMPP. 70% said a good reason to support, to oppose tolling. So these are supporters. 70% of supporters of RMPP said a good reason to support tolling is that it's unfair to those who can't shift their travel times. 66% said good reason to support toll, or oppose tolling is because of increased traffic congestion, and 65% said it's a good reason to oppose tolling because the costs of maintained roads should be shared by the state, which is another way to say even those who are supportive of RMPP, they, they acknowledged that these are problems, okay? Not just they, I mean, two-thirds acknowledged this problem, okay? And similarly, for the I-5, I-205 Abernathy Bridge project, we see that even among supporters of that project, they also acknowledge that these are good reasons to oppose. So after people considered the plans, they considered information pro and con. We did follow up and say, now that you've heard more, where are you at? So RMPP support started at 27%. After they considered different perspectives, it fell to 21. Opposition rose to 77. For I-205 Abernathy Bridge, support started at 32. It fell to 26. Opposition rose to 71. And then lastly, so all this is about tolling, and here's the tough reality that comes next, is that we did ask them to consider alternatives to tolling. And remember, three-quarters to 80% agreed or said that the quality of the roads is a concern. Congestion is a concern. They agree that there are problems to be met. Now, they're rejecting tolling as the solution. So we did ask about four other ways to raise revenue to address quality, to address congestion. Of the four, and this, like the universe is bigger than these four, but of the four, the only one that had majority support was increasing registration fees on electric 36% supported increasing registration, registration fees on all vehicles. 33% supported increasing gas taxes. And just 24% supported a pay per mile or a road usage charge. So no tolling, right? But not really yes to anything else that we asked about, except for electric vehicle registration fees. Now, I'm not the funding expert with our transportation system, but I don't think we're going to, I'm going to editorialize. I don't think we're, we're meeting our transportation needs by just that alone. But that's the only thing we got to majority support, and the others are, are well away from 50%. So there's some challenges, like we can, the governor's taken something off the table. The voters are telling us that they're, they're grateful that that's taken off the table, but they're not giving us a lot of guidance about what the alternative is. And that's the hard part about these results, is that the next step is less clear than the decision that was just made. With that, I'll stop. I think that's my last slide. I'm happy to entertain questions or give you back your time.
Questions for John.
I know this was published in several papers, but did it go to ODOT directly?
I don't know if it did or not. That wouldn't be, that would be up to you or to Westland, who sort of took the lead on it. So if you would like to, that would be.
Yeah, it just, especially that last slide. I mean, it's very obvious that a lot of the public doesn't understand this need, and they have big concerns about efficiencies at ODOT, which I share. So I, I think it's a good message to them as they move forward and look at covering the transportation costs.
It would surprise me if folks at ODOT have not noticed. It wasn't, this survey was referenced in most of the articles that I saw, but just whether it goes to them or not, that's up to you all, yeah.
Other questions, comments? All right. Thank you, John. I mean, you and your firm did terrific with this.
Thank you.
There was a couple of meetings before the survey was released between the cities and the union, and you guys, you know, came up with a list of questions. We vetted them. Just outstanding job.
Thank you.
When the numbers came back, none of us were shocked, but we got to see some of the things in, in better detail, especially the difference between the counties and, as you say, proximity counts. Then your final slide is, okay, what's next?
Yeah.
You know, this is something we're going to be talking about continually between now and 2025, when the next legislature session comes up, because they're going to have to tackle the transportation question and what will work. People acknowledge that ODOT has a shortage of funds. They've got the, was the Abernathy's $400 million short right now on construction costs, so they have to find $400 million somewhere to pay just for the Abernathy. Then the I-5 IBR project is multi-billion to get completed, and the governor did not take tolling off the, you know, tolling is still probably going to proceed on the I-5 bridge. We're all assuming on the Abernathy, but RMPP is, I like how you put it, John, it's kind of paused. It's not dead. It just paused again. And so the cities of Clarkamas County are going to continue to meet, discuss, and start working with the legislators on that last slide and, you know, what will work for the public to get these roads funded, get the bridges funded. And, you know, there's still looming out there in July, the environmental analysis, DEA. There's nervousness that the, ODOT will still release it in July. They only give us 60 days or so to respond because, you know, there's a feeling they might think we're going to go to sleep at the wheel. All of a sudden, they can release the DEA in July, and we'll be scrambling again to respond to it. So this continues. I mean, it was, I did an opinion piece in the Tuolton Life, so I applaud the governor's decision on this, but we still got to keep at it and figure out what's going to happen in '25 because we got to fix these roads if some of them falling apart. She also did not, work is going to continue, the Rose Garden, the Rose Quarter, the cap there, because they got to fix that too. And where are they going to find the money for that? Again, thank you, John.
Thank you.
If you have other questions, we'll let them know.
Okay. All right. That brings up to our second item on the agenda tonight, the council chambers technology upgrade, Bates-Russell. How are you going to do it? How are you going to go back and forth and do this, this phone?
Do it from Zoom. I'll go on Zoom. I'll go back home and join you. Let's see. Hey, look, amazing. Okay. Hello, Mayor, Council President and Council. I'm Bates Russell. I'm the IT Director here at the City of Tuolton. So yeah, we're here to talk about the AV improvements that we've done. So the city was incorporated back in 1913, and shortly after that, we started this project because it has taken so long to get done. It was a 16-month haul after all. So what happened was we did a lot of theory things, this would work, and we did a lot of testing and trial and error, and compounding that with the fact that there were delays due to residual COVID things, right? Shipping and access and getting vendors to do business a different way. So it took a lot of time. But it's done now, and so I just kind of want to walk you through what we have here. So the Tuolton Valley Community Television, TVCTV, who does the community television for Washington County and all the cities, has a wing, or sorry, it's a wing of the Metro Area Communication Commission, the MAC, and they put together the budget for this and worked with us on how to improve our technology for you guys. So if you remember way back in, this is 2019, we were at the senior center and a security camera mounted in the corner that kind of gave this fun little Dutch angle for us to look at, and the microphones were atrocious. We upgraded those midway through to the digital microphones and had no say in it. It was really hands-off by TVCTV because they didn't need to be there for it. And through time, through improvements, and through slow incremental changes and time, we've moved here, and we've, in the meantime, went to this camera, that white camera up there that we're still using for the Zoom feed, and the microphones that we brought over from the other location. And currently, now we have five cameras that you guys are pointing at you at any given time. And so that'd be that one over in the left corner to you, to you guys there. When we started this, we wanted to aim for a couple of goals. So those were to make sure that we improve the technology around everything, the audio and the video and public access, that we met the new bill that passed in '21, House Bill 21.
that we met the new bill that passed in '21, House Bill 2160, which requires jurisdictions to have access for public to be able to provide public comment from afar, and that can be solved in many ways, but Zoom is really the, generally the easiest way to do that, with all of its, you know, Zoom bombings and all the chaos that's ensued since then. But making technology in this room accessible by the TVC-TV staff, the staff that continue to work here on a daily basis, for the council meetings, for the public, all of that had to be factored in. The Twalton Valley came down, scouted out everything we needed to do, sized up what technology we're gonna use, and now does not need to, as in the past, have to deploy somebody down here to produce it. So if you've been at years or on other councils, or if you hear years ago, they used to send somebody down, they'd sit in a small, tiny room in the back, and they would do what they're doing now. So we now are the first one in the region to have remote control. So Kelly Frank, who's staffing us tonight, does an amazing job for us, is cutting between the cameras as you guys speak or as I speak, and is probably zooming in on me right now. Hello. So adding in the complexity of Zoom into that is a whole nother beast, and that's why you may not see the actual presentation on these screens, because we have to still push Zoom. So we're mostly in charge of Zoom, they're in charge of capturing and doing a better quality production than the corner. So here's a little bit more, they'll be able to put graphics on this, they're able to zoom in and out, they're able to get shots of all of you, so, you know, I spent an unreasonable amount of time trying to find, like, really good shots of everyone that I'm gonna go, somebody's like, they're gonna be upset if this shot, so. So those are all very active and good things. Look, there's even the presenter table now, you don't get to just see the back of somebody's head talking, you get, you get them. On Zoom land, if you're watching this on Zoom right now, you will get however your setup is, but generally by default, you'll get the presentation and this, whatever is sending over this camera right now. And then we occasionally push the presentation to be fullscreen, so that they end up getting a, you know, for some finer details in there. Now, there are a ton of ways to be able to watch TVC-TV, so I'm gonna say this to you, I'm gonna say this to all of the million viewers that are watching right now. You can go onto TVC-TV.org and watch it straight from the TVC-TV site, you can download their streaming app on Roku, Apple TV, any streaming device. TVC-TV has an app, and you can watch all of the content there, not just for us, if you're interested in others governmental programming. You can watch it live on Channel 30 and 28, depending on where you're at, but Channel 30 generally for us, if you wanna watch it live on television, it's broadcast over the air digitally as well as through cable. On YouTube, on our site, after the fact, and that's not live, that'll be after the fact, and then, of course, on our streaming site right now, so if you went to our website and looked at it, you could pop it up right there, and then, of course, on Zoom if you're in the meeting. So there's plenty of, oh, and in person, thank you guys for coming. So there's plenty of opportunity for everyone to get your messages. I wanted to extend just a huge thank you to TVC-TV, to the MAC, to you all and my boss for the patience that it took to put this into place. TVC-TV provided not just the lion's share, but mostly, you know, probably in the ninetieth percentile of all of the funding for this out of their budget, so it's their equipment we're allowed to use. They managed the project, they use this new cutting-edge tech, but they can use in other places, saving everyone time and money and having to send someone down and gas and leave, you know, Kelly gets to go home at a reasonable time instead of having to pack up everything. We have a really good positive relationship with MAC and TVC-TV. That is the end of my presentation, if you guys have any questions.
Questions for Bates?
Yes.
Counsel Reyes.
Thank you, Bates. Really great to know that's finally coming along. A while back, I think two years ago, you mentioned that there was a need for security and infrastructure, like making sure that our cybersecurity is well and that we're not getting hijacked by somebody, or how is that coming along?
For the whole city or for like the council?
I think, I think lately I've been hearing a lot about people just coming in to council meetings and with all this technology and people being able to see us through different ways.
Yep.
Can they just like bombard us or something with something or?
Yeah, the, for, that's a great question, Counsel Reyes, the, thanks for being mindful of security, that's always one of my favorite topics. Yes, anything's possible, right, at any time, anyone can do anything they want, but we have kinda some stopgaps in place here. Nicole and I or whoever's staffing, kind of vet who's in the lobbies to try to allow that, but as we've discussed in prior times, that's neither her nor my role to like shut people off, right? There's variations on speech. So it'll be up to, you know, whoever's running the meeting, typically the mayor, to let us hit the eject button if there's somebody doing something inappropriate. By and large, knock on wood, we've been pretty safe from that, we're pretty limited to people just being able to speak to us, they can't take over our feed, they can't broadcast on top of it, you're public figures, and so your face and voices are out there, names are out there. As for the city side, we're doing oodles and effortful and money and all that kinda stuff to make sure that everyone's data is as safe as possible.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel Brooks, Counsel Bruce in Pratt.
Thank you. I have less technical questions and more, I'm curious about structure of the, how the funding, where the funding comes from, and is this TV part of what is protected by the FCC under public fair or public free access, like the people own part of the airwaves?
Yes, that's the excellent question also, you guys are on fire tonight, good job. So the Metro Area Communication Commission is funded through, and I'm gonna speak for them, so I may get some of this a little wrong, but they're funded by a fee that's applied to all the television providers that are serving the area. So if you have Comcast or Zipley or some television provider, you pay a fee on there that is, I'm sure it's not called a, you know, Twalton pass-through fee or something, it's called, you know, support for public access or some fee. That money is peeled off and put into reserves, and I believe that both pays for the operating funds of MAC as well as grant funding that we're eligible for as jurisdictions. So cities in the, can ask for money, we've funded several projects around the city through that. So the money comes from the people and it's put over the public airwaves, and if you, again, if you are one of the millions who are watching tonight, TVC-TV has studios, right? Like you think Wayne's World, like, you know, like, I'm gonna go do my public, you know, that you can do that up there, you can schedule a time, you can have access to it, it is the public facility, and they're always looking for new content, too. Did that answer your question additionally?
Yes, I think, yes, I think it's good information for people to know that it's part of their rights as far as owning, and sometimes we tease about like C-SPAN and probably us, too, like once the lighting next, and, but the fact that those airwaves are protected, especially with what we see with how hard people have fought to keep those protections in place, and there's a conversation going on right now, that it's, I just am happy that we're able to access the support as a city and continue to provide not only a way for people to see their government work, but also now participate, which is pretty amazing. Thanks for doing such a great job. That's all I got, thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Brooks.
Well, my question was answered, so I'll just say thank you for your hard work in TVC-TV. And I do, my one question is, I noticed in the before picture I have dark hair, now it's gray, so what happened there?
Do you want, do you want me to go? We can go Photoshop something there if you'd like. Which one do you prefer?
Counsel Hillier?
Thank you. That was priceless. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Bates. I'm just curious, as we consider accessibility to our meetings, I'm wondering if you foresee rules around providing sign language as well as subtitles like in other languages, specifically Spanish? Just wondering if you see that coming on the horizon, or if there are things that we can think of to even make our position even more accessible to others?
Yeah, great, great thought. So right now, Zoom has some of those features built into it, so if you're doing it there, it'll do, and, you know, the transcript is always close. TVC-TV does closed captioning on the live TV, and our YouTube channel will have access to closed captioning, and so it would be in the live moment, and that's where technology really is coming into its own on that, so things such as large language models, AI, right, will do things where in real time you can do that. So that stuff is always being applied, and we're not, we're not creating it, we're just going, oh, this is cool, let's make that happen. So yeah, we're being mindful of that, and with other things around the city, too, with our websites and with everything that we put out, we try to be mindful of that.
And people can always, within 24 hours, request accessibility services for your language, including side language.
I'll say that aloud, so in case it didn't get put on the microphone for recording. So anybody requesting adaptive services can ask for it with 24 hours' notice.
Other questions or comments? Well, thanks, Bates. I know the one thing, I don't hear complaints about anymore is about, since we got into the new microphones and the sounds.
The audio, yes.
Yeah, it used to be, everyone could see us, but they couldn't hear a word we were saying.
Right, and depending on who you speak to, that's not a bad thing, right?
Exactly, but.
Yeah, thank you all for going through the eating the mics and that kinda stuff, we've very much dialed it in, and not to say that things won't break, but we're at a good place right now, so.
Thank you.
You guys are all doing well.
All right, thank you. All right, that brings us up to our third item on the agenda tonight, the 2024 Council Advanced Debrief from Megan George, welcome, Megan.
Hello, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Megan George, the Deputy City Manager in Twalton, and tonight I'm here to review a summary report of the council's two-day advance on January 26th and 27th earlier this year. Oh, thank you, Bates. So as always in Twalton, we refer to this process as an advance, because we are always moving forward, we are not retreating. Generally, we follow a two-year cycle, and this year's advance fell in the midterm, our mid-cycle priority refining step. Included in your packet and before you this evening is a summary report from the advance, and I will review the summary's components, and then I'll ask for your feedback from, to ensure that everything is captured in the report and that it is intelligible. All right, so Sarah Singer-Wilson of SSW Consulting and her team facilitated the process this year, and before we met in January, her team did some prep work with both members of the city council and with the city's executive team. And from those discussions, we identified four outcomes for the advance that we were looking for. First, to highlight accomplishments and confirm the team is on the right track. Second, to develop a shared understanding of the community and organization context to inform discussions around priorities and capacity. Third, to facilitate a process where diverse perspectives are welcomed and heard and find areas of alignment to focus the team's efforts and resources in the coming year. And fourth, conduct intentional team building that will help council and staff in advancing their vision and priorities. The advance was held at the beautiful and historic Winona Grange over the two days. On Friday, January 26th, the agenda included reflecting on the previous year's accomplishments, mapping out the current context, and diving into the vision and priority refinement. Then on Saturday, the 27th, we reviewed the outcomes for each of the priorities established and came to some team agreements. So the 2030 vision graphic on the screen should look familiar, it has not changed thus far from 2023. We did not update it this year as part of our mid-cycle advance. We have, however, asked Sarah's team to make updates to the graphic itself for your placemat so that it matches the aesthetic of all of the graphic materials. All right, diving into the substance of the advance. One of the first activities we did as part of the environmental scan was to reflect on the year before and celebrate our accomplishments. So as you can see on the screen, there's a pretty long list in pretty small font of accomplishments that were identified during the advance. This list is not inclusive, there are many accomplishments that our departments feel really proud of over the past year, and this is a smattering of some of those highlights. And then to take a highlight of the highlights, just a few that I'll point out, are that we sold the first chunk of the Parks and Trails bond, we adopted the Water Master Plan, we made facility improvements to our library, and we created an assistance program for utility billing in partnership with community action. The second part of the environmental scan was to map out the current context. So if the last slide was hard to read, this one should be even more challenging. So it includes a photograph of the chart paper that we used during the actual advanced session, where Sarah asked us to brainstorm different factors in six different categories. Those were political factors, the economic climate, organizational trends, technology factors, community needs, and uncertainties. Through the environmental scan, that then led us to take a look at our priorities for 2024. The graphic on the screen is the initial draft of those 2024 priorities. We identified seven. First, neighborhood engagement, then housing, economic development, transportation, environment, parks, culture, and identity. So looking at the graphic, you read it across the screen as opposed to up and down, that took me a few minutes, I'm embarrassed to say, to figure out how they were organized. So next to each of these priorities are a few bullet points that describe the outcomes that the council identified during the advance for each of those priorities. The following slides will detail each priority, including those outcomes and a few of the actions identified, many of which are already in process. In the attached summary report, we have also made initial assignments to various departments for those action items. All right, getting into it. Number one, neighborhood engagement. So the outcomes that council described during the advance for neighborhood engagement were to celebrate our investments, continue to build relationships, and to educate and engage. So there were three actions identified, one for street trees, one for the community involvement organizations, and third for neighborhood investment. So I won't read through all of them, but they are included in your summary packet along with that departmental assignment. Just choosing one to go through, staff will provide education to the community and facilitate a work session with the council on the sidewalk street tree program. Continuing on to priority two, which is housing, the outcomes identified for housing were to increase diverse housing options, understand Twalton's housing options and needs, build shared understanding of regional and local housing landscape. There were four actions identified under the housing category, just choosing one, we'll go with 2.3, green space. We will revisit the code for options to address preservation of and addition of green space in new development. All right. Number three, economic development. The outcomes here were to communicate process and progress on urban renewal areas and to innovate in imaginative planning to connect people through development. There are three actions here, the first one listed is food carts, to revisit the policy and specifications, and as you know, this is one of the tasks included in the Planning Division's work plan already for this year. Moving along to transportation, priority number four, outcomes, the transportation system plan update and clear transportation priorities that support strategic advocacy. Two actions here, first is to complete the transportation system plan update. All right, fifth priority is the environment. The outcomes are to adopt a climate action plan and a prioritized five-year implementation plan. Two actions, they match pretty nicely onto the outcomes, so I won't read those again. Priority six is parks. The outcomes here, our community is informed on the bond project progress, residents are prioritized in summer recreation programming. Again, two actions, they match pretty nicely onto the outcomes as well here, the parks bond is to provide regular communication regarding the progress on projects related to the parks bond. All right, the seventh priority identified is. All right, the seventh priority identified is culture and identity. Two outcomes, one is to share progress on the IDEA Committee or the Inclusion, Diversity, Equity, and Access Advisory Committee work plan. And second is training and education to support a trauma-informed organization. There were two actions identified for this one, which are similar to the outcomes. All right, the last activity that Sarah facilitated was to ask three questions of each member of the group. What's working, what's missing, and what supports the workload? Her team took the bullet point lists that were created during the advance and consolidated them into four agreements. The short version is listed on the screen. We have, we are one team, we are prepared, we are strategic, and we are innovative. All right, so the next steps following tonight's discussion, you might see your face up there, either in picture form or real life. The next steps are to incorporate any changes from tonight's discussion, to create the 2024 placemat, and to provide the council with periodic progress reports. So as I mentioned previously and throughout, there are many of these actions that are already in progress with staff and are scheduled to come before you throughout the year. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation and ask for your feedback. Specific questions include, is anything missing from the summary report? Does anything not make sense? Or does it not resemble what was discussed? And then, of course, any feedback on the language used. Thank you, and I'll turn it back over to you, Mayor.
Thanks, Megan. Questions, comments? Council Brooks.
Thank you very much for summarizing it. This year's advance for me was, I would say, a little bit more chaotic than any advance I've ever been to. So to summarize all of that, I think it takes a lot of effort and really good work. So I appreciate that. I am curious, we had a couple of discussions that I don't see on here and I'm not sure where it goes. And it's around capacity building. And the mayor's talked about a lobbyist. And we've talked about grant writing. And I'm not sure where that fits into the plan and concerns around making sure that we have enough staffing as we're growing. If anything tricky comes up, to make sure that we're, you know, that we have enough if there's an onslaught on Steve.
Not to name names.
Just not to name names. Or that's my example from last year. And then, and then we've talked about in the past as well that I don't see on here, and we probably didn't bring up at the advance. I feel like it's on the old list as far as finishing up one last thing that we could do for the gun laws in the city. We had one last thing that we talked about. And do you know what I'm talking about?
Public carry?
Yeah, public carry. And I don't know how we forgot it or we just didn't. I'm trying to think. Other than that, I'm really impressed by the work that we've done this last. You know, it's always a huge list. The staff in our city are amazing. We know that some departments are short. They feel short to me. And nonetheless, everyone really works together and has come out of a really difficult time with COVID, you know, back in person. And, you know, shifting our perspective from sort of, you know, handling all the surprises that came towards us during that time to going back to building our vision and building our parks. So I'm really excited about communicating what we have achieved in the past as well as what we're achieving in the future to the community as well as we can. Because it's good news, and I think it's really important for our community to stay informed and for us to hear from them if there's anything that's not feeling right. So I know you do a great job with that. So thank you.
Sure. I captured capacity building, lobbyist, grant writing, enough staffing as we are growing, and then the public carry law revisit. And I think some of these items may be referenced not directly, but in the team agreement paragraphs. I think the capacity issue specifically and being strategic and thinking about what makes the most sense in terms of prioritization. As far as the specific project list, I can work with Cheryl and see if we can include them in the list of projects.
I guess my other question with that is, it doesn't like quite fit into.
One of the seven areas?
Yeah, and it's like, like health of our city, infrastructure or something like that is, I don't know, like you have a plant and you have to water it. Like whatever that is, but, and I don't know how exactly it fits into it, but.
Thank you, Megan, for your presentation. So one thing we talked a lot about during the core area conversation that we've had over the last few years is the city identity. And I feel like that might be missing under priority seven, culture and identity. And I can see where it kind of is weaved in a little bit under the, I'm scrolling, the economic development area. But just as culture and identity has the word identity in it, and we've talked so much about what is the identity of Toowalatin, I feel like maybe we're missing some of that in that area.
Others? We're heading now, anyone else to add?
I would agree with Councilor Sacco where I think identity, what we're thinking more, and I, we do have some priority seven good bullet points, but I think we're talking more like the look or this, kind of like, not aesthetics, because I don't want to say that, but more like, how does the core area look at? How do people identify that area as, oh, yeah, this is Toowalatin, I can see.
Like place making?
Yeah, it was more like in that kind of, I think it was under that context.
Yeah, one clarification, if I may. So as you mentioned, under priority three, economic development, there's an action item related to communicating about Basselt Creek and the downtown urban renewal area, which I think is how they captured that specific one. It sounds like it's in addition to, or maybe a separate action from the just communicating about the urban renewal areas that you're describing. Is that correct?
Correct. It's coming up, it's kind of what Council Reyes says, you know, so people know when they have arrived in Toowalatin, what is that look and feel of Toowalatin? And, you know, I don't even think that we've really decided, you know, what that is. But I think when the core area, renewal area, when we start really investing in that, that needs to be in the forefront. And I don't know when that work begins, but.
Right, even, may I, we liked that, sorry, since we're on the same topic. For instance, even some parts that people don't know that it is Toowalatin and until they try to get permits or something like that, they're like, oh, that's not Lake Oswego, that's Toowalatin, that's not Wilsonville, that's Toowal. So even with that, I feel like there's no, like say, okay, you've entered Toowalatin and, or like make us, I think the only, when you come in from the freeway on the I-5 where the welcome to Toowalatin, I think that's a good sign. But around the rest of the city, there's nothing that really identify us and say, okay, you have arrived in Toowalatin. Like other cities have that kind of look.
Sure, yeah. Couple of, I suppose, responses and ideas. So you asked about the timing for the urban renewal area. My understanding is that the urban renewal area will start collecting funds in the next year or so, but that funds won't accrue to amounts large enough to actually work on projects until much later, potentially 2030 or even further out, where we'll start to see changes based on that funding level. So to a certain extent, not yet for that. For your comments, Councilor Reyes, the city does have a tourism plan, which is a component of our Creative Communications and Marketing Program Manager position. And it's something that she's pulling up soon to look at. So perhaps there's some overlap there.
But I also think, I mean, just to riff off of what you said, Megan, the, my recollection of the conversation at the advance was that even though it won't start collecting for a while and we're not able to do projects, that we need to be communicating about that and taking the, if there's any low-hanging fruit that we can do, like innovative planning or keeping in forefront the, like getting people around and the identity, that we start doing that and communicating about it.
Thank you very much. This was very well put together, thank you. The council advance this time for me was kind of enlightening. It reset some processes for me, which was really good. So I just want to say thank you very much for gathering all this information and putting it in a way that we can understand it and move forward.
Anything else? Thanks, Megan.
All right, well, we'll make updates to this and get you an updated copy, and then we'll start working on the placemat.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, that brings us up to the Agenda Review and Roundtable. We've got several proclamations tonight. I'm going to do the Arbor Month proclamation. And Council President Pratt has already said she'd like to do the Parkinson's Awareness Month proclamation. So who would like to do community development? No surprise, Bridgette, all right? And National Library Week. Okay. Council Sacco, okay. And as far as Pledge of Allegiance, it's Council Gonzalez's turn tonight. All right, and any questions on what's on consent? We have three items, I believe.
I do have one question. I don't think I have to take out this slide from our consent. I just wanted to get clarity, so do I have to pull it out of consent? Just to ask a question or?
You can ask a question right now, then if we can't clarify it.
It's around the equitable engagement grant acceptance, which it's really good. I like it a lot that we're going to pursue that. I just want to make sure that when we're looking for hiring vendors or providing vendors, that we are looking for merit-based award and not looking for race. And I believe this does not talk about that, but I just want to go on the record that whenever anything is appointed or any city contract, it has to be based on merit, in my opinion, not on race, gender, or any kind of like that. So I believe this doesn't touch on that, just kind of had a little bit of taste of that.
You're talking about item number two?
Yes.
Okay. This isn't the county doing the hiring or city a tiger?
Oh, no, and I think Stephen Cody left. But this is expanding our.
I'm in the wrong one, okay, pick up.
Yeah, so this is our TSP, our Transportation System Plan. And we, we've already hired, the consultant is already on board, but we're expanding the scope of that consultant to get more people involved. And so we applied for this grant, and it's in the maybe $20,000 range to allow us to expand the number of people that get involved.
Thank you very much for coming on that.
So we have five items on consent. I was looking at the wrong list of things. Okay, with anything else on consent? All right, with that, we'll go ahead and start our roundtable. We'll start with Council Sacco.
Thank you. On March 4th, we met as the CCAA and interviewed wonderful candidates for our advisory positions, which I think we're all excited to put before council tonight. And then March 18th, we had the IDEA Committee meeting. Megan attended and reviewed the city survey in depth. There was just great questions and lots of engagement there. It was really a great job, Megan. And then the group continued to work on their mission and value statements and reviewed possible topics for further meetings. That's it.
Council Hillier.
Thank you, Mayor. On March 21st, I attended the WCCCA Police, Fire, and Medical Board of Commissioners meeting. We kind of did the, a little bit of the normal finance report, new business, that sort of thing. And they talked about ensuring that the contracts with the ambulance companies are up to date, and even though it was kind of post-dated, but everything. And people should feel confident when they call 911 that if an ambulance is needed, that will be happening. And then I went over the budget to ensure they're just, I think, I believe it's a year now that they've been in the new facility out in the Hillsborough area. And so they're very proud of that and always wanting visitors, which I'm looking forward to visiting one day soon. So it was great. And it's really just encouraging to know that there are people from all the cities in Washington County who attend this meeting. And it's kind of those little finite behind-the-scenes things that you don't see that when you need a service, it gets done and really understanding the 911 process. So, thank you.
Council Ritz.
Yeah, like Council Sacco said, we, on March 4th, we met with the, we had the CCAA meeting and which we will, like always, we were always happy to meet the community and those who apply. This was for the interviews, I believe it was the core, the arts. And if you remind me, if there's another one, but those are the two committees that I remember that we, people from those two committees we interviewed. And then I also attended the TPS, the Transportation Plan, on the 13th of March. And it was, it was really good. I really enjoyed it. It was my first time attending that, that planning committee. And it was, I was there on behalf of Councilor Pratt. But it was engaging, there were a lot of people, we kind of got in little groups, different tables, and we just started brainstorming about different topics that the county, the contractors, the people that are putting this together, helping us out. So it was a really, it was really good to engage with a lot of the community members and residents in Toowalatin in person. So that was a great, great meeting for me, and I really enjoyed it. And I think we're going to have a really great plan at the end. I also attended the core meeting, committee meeting on the, on just last Tuesday, I believe. So it was like the 18th, I think, 18th and 19th, I can't remember. But it was March, and we talked about the budget and we talked about the parking core committee. And we are just kind of reviewing on, we're reviewing that. We talked about the lots that need some kind of renovations. So how we're going to fund that. But mostly, we, we really focused on getting the budget, how we were going to use the funds. And also, we did some recommendation, we were, we talked about recommending an increase on the, on the budget, just because we are going to prepare more for the inflation and things do not cost the same as we did, as they did like two years ago or when we first talked about it. So we're just, we're viewing a lot of that within the committee. So there's more to come on that. Thank you.
Council Gonzalez.
So attended the TSP plan. That was quite exciting to be a part of that and see community come out and be very engaging. Had a really good group. Everybody seemed to have focused on around the same areas. I'm really interested to see when those all overlap together, all the different tables overlap their plans together and see the area of focus. The other, I attended the Business of Exson Award at the Chamber event at the club. Also was pretty exciting to be there. Wonderful participation of community leaders, district, district school leaders were there, businesses. It was just a great attendance and very impressive of the involvement of our city. So that's all I got.
Council Brooks.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the Arts Advisory Committee. We mostly discussed upcoming, the last year's goals and the upcoming goals of next year. And if there's any funding desires by the committee for the budget coming up. And it was a good discussion. And it was a good discussion. And it was also just nice for people to come together after such a successful art selection for the Veterans Plaza. And I also attended the Business Excellence Awards, which was excellent, our, our own Oscars. And, and know a lot of people that got the awards and they're so well deserved and people that really contribute a lot to our community in many different ways, including being great business leaders. And it was nice to sponsor as a city, the Chamber event and be there. And also I attended the lead presentation, Councilor Sacco presented. And I learned more, actually, there was a really great presenter from the county that discussed specific rates of risky behaviors from our school system. And it was good to know that some of the problem is people thinking, kids thinking that the problem's worse than it is and thinking that they should be part of that trend that doesn't really exist. So that was great, especially around more hard drugs. We, they showed up like non-statistically even showing up. So it was pretty amazing. And then I was surprised by the issues with online gambling. And of course, we have horrendous suicide rates here. And then the biggest problem is still drinking. And then I feel like there's one other thing. But we skipped the PAB meeting this week. I did the arts, yeah. Anyway, that's it, Happy Holy Week. And it's Holy Day for Hindu people in the beginning of spring. So there's all kinds of spring things going on. I have Orthodox Christians in my background, so we're still in Lent until May 5th. We get to celebrate Orthodox Easter at the same time as Cinco de Mayo this year. So that'll be interesting. Anyway, thank you.
Council President Pratt.
I have quite a list, so I'll try to go through it fast. Went to the CCAA meeting and the Chamber Excellence Awards. And my takeaway from both of them is we have some awesome people in this community that give a lot of their time. Then I went to the National League of Cities Conference in Washington DC with the mayor. And that, I, it was just amazing. And what I thought was super interesting is you met people from all over the country. And you know what, they all have the same problems, affordable housing and traffic issues, so there we go. We got to see President Biden, Pete Buttigieg. And this was the big one for me, was Doris Kearns Goodwin, because I just love her. And I have to give a shout out to the mayor because we got to visit with Representative Salinas and he got to give a little push for earmarks for our police station, so, thank you. When I got back, I went to the Clackamas County Business Association meeting and Cheryl and was there with me. We heard from Senator Meeks and Representatives Walters and Gamba. They gave us a kind of a recap of a short session and said that transportation and housing are going to be the big issues next year, no surprise. I went to see for Metro and we just talked about regional flexible fund allocation, which are transportation funds and a really small percentage of the total. So the C4 toll strategy committee met, we went over what we saw today. And we decided that we're going to continue to meet, maybe less often, but we want to be proactive and nobody really believes that tolling might not be on the table in the future. And also the other, as you saw from that survey, we want to know more about the cost and implications of other revenue sources, because we know something's needed. Then I went to that LEAP event and the thing that always gets me of everything I've gone to with these events is those vaping products that are made to look like they're for little kids and it's just terrible. And I have to say really quick that Council Sacco is my hero right now because she gave a very personal story and it was all meant to help other people and make us all feel like we're all okay. And then lastly, the C4 retreat is going to be on June 14th and 15th. This is a Friday and Saturday. And if anybody's interested in going, let me know and I'll forward the information to you.
I just want to correct that the Core Committee meeting was March 19th. I think I said 18th earlier, so put it on record out there.
All right. One thing I want to mention, which Frank Bates talked about it, like Friday night, for some reason I watched the Cornelius City Council meeting and the Tiger City Council meeting. And one thing they do that we don't do when we do our roundtable is they go to the city manager. The city manager participates and says what's going on in the city as far as administratively. So think about it, because the Cornelius City Manager talked about a bunch of stuff that I had no idea was going in Cornelius, same thing in Tiger, so we might want to add that. Yeah, so DC was really good with Council President Pratt. We have to do a report, so we'll tag team oral report. One thing that I was kind of reluctant to go to and ended up turning out being fantastic, there's this Western States Consortium where the Western States, their League of Oregon Cities, if you will, each state has their own formation, kind of like LLC. And they had the city of Phoenix give a presentation on the deep dive analysis they've done on affordable housing and houselessness. That was fantastic. In the past, they've talked about mining and stuff like that and I was like, yeah, I'm not going to this. But I got talked into going and Council Pratt went with me also. And it was some fantastic information that I'll try to get from the League of Oregon Cities since they, David Amami of Happy Valley is the chair, is the co-chair. So I can get the slides from him to share with you guys. Capitol Hill Day was interesting, because the best part, you hear the, you know, our senators and congresspeople come, but the questions from the students, they didn't hold back. I mean, they had some fantastic questions, a lot, a lot more edgier than ours. So they did a really good job of questioning our federal legislators. And we got to attend the very end of the, the four, three young women who went as part of Julie's continuing for the youth delegates. We got to see them, what they do in their last day is they have a city council session where they split up people being pro and against certain measures. And they have two minutes, basically come up and do public comment. And these folks, these kids did fantastic. I mean, we didn't want to leave, so we stayed for the whole entire, because it was, and these, some, these kids, some of them were speed talkers. To get their two minutes in, but they did, they represented their communities very well. The three young women that came from Tuolumne did a fantastic job. We just missed their presentation, but we talked about it later on. So looking forward to having them come, you know, as part of the YAC when they get to do their update. One thing that's super nice is now with tolling being paused, our tech meetings have been canceled. So we don't have to go to those meetings anymore, but those will probably be substituted with, like I mentioned before, the Clackamas County folks are going to get together still and start coming up with a game plan and start talking to our legislators now. The goal is that before the session starts, we've already got them convinced of what needs to get done versus scrambling during the session. And then on the 18th, Washington County Corning Committee, the Mistip 3F projects were approved by the Washington County Corning Committee and forwarded on to the board for their approval. That's the Cypole Road roundabout near Rayborn Plumbing that we've requested and is included in the packet. So we have that project. Tiger's got the Hall Boulevard project and Sherwood has Eddie Project. So our, we, our district has the most money, it's about a $50 million ask. So fingers crossed the board commissioners approve it. J-Pac trip is coming up, May 13th through 17th. So I'll probably be heading back to DC to advocate on transportation's funding. The first day is on behalf of the region and the second day is the Washington County Ask. And we're thinking this time, last year we went with a list of projects and that didn't go over well. It's just a laundry list, so we're going to go with storytelling this year and say why these certain things and these projects are important to us and why the, you know, dancer, Representative Bluman hours comment last year, you know, what makes them special over something else versus asking, you know, a laundry list of 13 projects, let's tell them the three or four are important and why. Had a fantastic coffee with Chair Harrington on the 22nd, hour and a half chat, just, you know, what's going on here, what's going on in the county. Very much appreciate her giving me an hour and a half of her time. And I had the WEA board meeting that morning. Since we were in DC, I was unable to go to the, WEA had their, a summit on regional priorities and what's going on. I guess it was very well attended, a lot, a lot of folks were very positive on the feedback and what they said and so they can probably do again next year. And I think that's it for me. Yep, that's it. So we have a little extra time, we've got about 25 after 6:00. So we'll go ahead and close this work session and we'll come back at 7:00 for a regular meeting. So we'll see everyone back in about 25, 35 minutes.